Thank you very much. And I would like to follow that with the pledge of allegiance. And we'll say that all together. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
I would like to follow that with the pledge of allegiance. And to the Republic, we'll say that all together. One, I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
I would like to follow that with the pledge of allegiance. And to the Republic, we'll say that all together. One nation.
Allegiance to the flag.
And to the Republic, we'll say that all together. One nation.
That was special.
That was. We seem to have positive echoes going there. Whoever is watching it live on YouTube, can they mute that, please? All right. First item is going to be an approval of the agenda for the August 11, 2020 meeting of the Johnson City Regional Planning Commission. Are there any changes? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Whitfield, a second by Commissioner Cooper. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. Next item is going to be the approval of the minutes of our previous meeting. This was a special called meeting on July 21, 2020. Minutes have been distributed. Has everybody had an opportunity to review those? All right, I have two quick changes, Nicole. One, I don't know, it's nothing incorrect about it, but for the future, we listed staff under everybody who was present, and then below that, we listed staff separately. It kind of seemed confusing to me. In the future, could we maybe break that out as commissioners present and staff present? Because it was kind of a duplication.
Yes, and I apologize. We're still working out bugs on the new system. And so today, I made some changes, so that shouldn't be a problem anymore. But I'll go back and update this one to fix it, so I apologize.
No problem, I just thought it might be a problem for moving forward. The other comment I had was, I believe in the minutes, it said that we moved the election of officers to the end of the meeting. And I think on the agenda, they were originally at the end. Staff had requested that we move them to the beginning, but then staff withdrew that request. So I believe we made any change in terms of moving officers.
Okay, I'll correct that, too.
Did anybody else have any other comments about the minute, meeting, meeting minutes? All right, I am looking for a motion to approve those, then, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, a motion to approve from Commissioner Whitfield, a second from Tamara Aldridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Seeing there is no old business, we're going to jump right into new business. And the first item on our agenda is to consider the annexation of a portion of Tax Map 028, parcel 065.00, and all of Tax Map 029, parcel 0057, along Christian Church Road. Allow Hassan to take it away, please.
Thank you very much, Chief. Permit me share my screen, please. Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Planning Commissioners, before you, is your request to consider the annexation for two pieces of properties, or one and a half, let me put it that way, to be known as the Hert-Hunt Annexation along Christian Church Road. This is Christian Church Road. It intersects right here with Bonus Creek Road. I think two months ago, you recommended the approval of the annexation of these 19-acre piece of property, or portion of this single parcel. This is one parcel. And the applicant at the time requested that only a portion of it be annexed into the city. The current request includes the annexation of the rest of the property and this other piece that is owned by the about six or seven individuals that own this. All of them have requested that this portion and this piece be annexed into the city. This is owners initiated annexation. The property is also within the city, the urban growth boundary that extends further this way into, into the county. It's also within the urban services area where the city has fundamental commitment to provide urban services. The urban service boundary actually goes down on this railway. This map is a current zoning map of the city. Everywhere you see it in color, especially these red areas, yellow areas, those are areas inside the city already. So this portion of the property adjoins current city limits. These other property being requested for annexation also adjoins current city limits. Having been requested by the property owners adjoining the city limits and being within the urban growth boundary, the annexation meets the fundamental legal requirements for annexation of property into the city. When you're dealing with the annexation of this portion that is already in the city, one of the questions that came over at the time was, what is the plan, what is a proposed development for this particular area? At the time, there were a couple of options. The developer really didn't have somebody who had committed to developing the property, or had a potential developer who had walked away. While that moved forward a level of city commission, some of that developer committed or showed up to potentially develop this site and did present this concept, development concept at the city commission. It's a mixed-use development that will have retail, supermarket, a movie theater, residential development, parking, leasing offices on the side. That will, it will cover an entire area of over 70 acres, which will include this property and the other portion of the 35 acres that is already in the city. All of this area will be developed as part of this big project. Let me see if this YouTube video. Can you see the video, please?
No. No, you'll have to share that screen.
Oh, okay. That taught us more. Just give me a second, let me get to sharing that screen. Is it visible now?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That is the potential, the concept for the potential development on that side. Let me return to my screen. Can you see my screen now, please?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Thank you. So that is the potential mixed-use development that we're likely going to have on this side. Should all go well. This property, of course, this particular area falls within the economic development incentive zone for that city projects for touristic and retail uses in this particular area. The developer or the applicants, they have requested the B4 zoning district. In the initial report that I sent out, I've mentioned the MX district. It was kind of a mix of different consideration from the applicant and the developer, considering that this may be developed for different, for mixed uses. The B4 zoning district only permits residential from the second and upper floor of buildings. The developer has confirmed that any potential residential development on this side will not have residential uses on the first floor, so it will fit into the B4 zoning district regulations. Staff recommends the approval of this annexation. It meets all legal requirements for annexation. Utility services are currently available. This is seawall line, the line in blue that is a water line. Those services are currently available to this property. There is already commitment for extending these lines to this section of this other parcel that is already in the city, and those lines will also serve this part of the property. That's why there is basically zero dollars included in the fiscal impact analysis for water and seawall on this, for this particular annexation. All other services will be provided from the effective date of annexation in accordance with city policies. Staff recommends approval of the annexation, the assignment of the B4 zoning district, and the plan of services as submitted with the B4 zoning district assignment. Thank you.
Thank you, Hassan. All right, before we open the public hearing, are there questions of staff at this time?
Is there a done whole, Hassan, created there in the white area?
This... Yes, that, that will, property for now, will be, will remain in the county, for now. That is the property that came before you sometime in the past, that was known as the profit annexation. Was this piece, I think it's about three acres, and it did not pass a city commission at the time. So that's why we see out there in the county. Following this development plan, if all goes as conceptualized here, that piece will be part of this prominent development. So in the near or medium-term future, you're likely going to get a request for that piece to be annexed into the city as well.
Why wasn't it included as part of this request?
It's owned by a different property owner, and we can only annex upon annexation by that property owner. So it is very likely that the developer is still negotiating the sale with whoever that particular property owner is.
If that portion of it remained in the county, would the development still be able to proceed as planned? Or is it going to need to be annexed for this development to occur?
It would not need to be. The development can go as planned. We did in the county. For tax purposes, the tax assessor has something to call special interest for, if you have a single development with part of the property being in the county, part in the city, they have a special assessment calculation to put in place called special interest. They can do that if it remains in the county. But I think that this being in the economic incentive zone, which this being in the economic incentive zone, that is only, that is, that only applies to properties that are inside the city limits. It's very likely that the property will be annexed into the city.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions of staff at this time?
Hassan, do you know, has the economic incentive zone, has that been finally approved by the state yet?
To the best of my knowledge, not yet, sir. I think we, the expectation was that by now it would have gone through, but I think a lot of things have been slowed down with this pandemic situation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there additional questions of staff? Then I'm going to go ahead and open it, open the public hearing for this. Wendy, do we have anybody who has called in at this time for this item?
No, ma'am, but I had just put the screen up, so I would give it another minute or so.
Yeah, and we'll just, we'll leave that up. Perhaps we'll kind of follow the plan we did last meeting. We were going to begin our discussion as commissioners, and I want to officially close the public hearing just to give people an opportunity to call in. I don't want to cut it off prematurely, because I know that there's a little bit of a delay between our discussion and the public viewing. So while we wait, I'll go ahead and open this up for discussion amongst commissioners.
I don't see any real issue. You know, it's, it's, it's consistent with our, our original evaluation of the profit, of the profit property. And certainly, the concept plan is attractive for that, that part of our, our community.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooper. Others?
Hassan, if you're still there, could you give me a quick review of the difference between B4 and mixed-use MX?
Yes, sir, I'm Steve. The, the B4 zoning district is, its name in full is the Planned Arteria Business District. It is generally for areas that are located along arterial roads. Most of the business districts in the city, the major business areas, like along State of Franklin, along West Market Street, along North Road of Trade, along Bristol Highway, along Bonus Creek Road itself, that, those corridors are B4 zoning district corridors. They are generally open to intensive commercial development, high-traffic volume areas. You know, the streets can accommodate high-traffic volumes. So that's the Planned Arteria Business District. Arteria being the particular street classification on Arteria Street. Generally for high mobility, low accessibility. And then you've got, it permits, as I said, high-intensive, intensive commercial uses, generally for commercial uses. For special exception, it permits some low-intensity industrial uses, but those ones generally, you have to go to the Board of Zoning Act here, meet some very specific requirements to be permitted to have those uses in the B4 zoning district. The mixed-use district, the MX, it's really for mixed-use development. It's not, if you're just going to do retail, the MX district would not be appropriate for that. If you're going to mixed uses, you know, have residential, have commercial development, yes, the MX district is, is intended for that. And it requires a development plan that has to be reviewed, not just, it's not just submitted at a level of staff, as a concept plan. The site has to be master-planned, that has to go through, if you have any rezoning, then that has to go through Planning Commission and City Commission for approval. So that the mixed-use district is supposed to be master-planned to take into consideration how the different uses are all going to mix or interact with each other, make sure that everything is okay. But the B4 zoning district, usually you can just have one specific type of use, whether it's just an office or a, a retail, a restaurant, you can just have that on, on that side. Following the comprehensive plan, one of the policies that was included in the comp plan was that the city should permit residential uses in the B4 zoning district, but they should be limited to the upper floor of buildings. In the MX district, you can have residential on the lower floor. In the B4, you can only have it on the upper floor. So those, that essentially is the distinction between the B4 zoning district and MX.
So the request on this annexation is that it'll be annexed in its entirety in the B4 now, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Hassan, even though this is an economic zone, opportunity zone, you can still have housing?
You can have, the way the ordinance is written, and probably when this eventually is approved, if it, if it's approved by the state, then whatever language that is in that, in that regulation will become clearer. But the way it currently reads, that will only apply for tourism and retail. Any other uses that you have there, whatever dollars that you generate, will not apply, there will not be direct benefit under, under those regulations.
So are there any dollars available for, if, I don't know, how many, I don't know how many units you could possibly put there? But would there be any dollars, and maybe Dr. Calhoun, you can answer this? If we need to add schools, elementary schools to that area?
There hadn't been any conversation about that for property that's developed along that area. I think there wasn't a lot of conversation about being, having it be residential. It was mostly the conversation on, on entertainment and, you know, the business aspects of it. So I don't think anybody's worked through that.
All right. Thanks, sir.
And this is steep conceptual, you know, as it gets made down to the point where we actually get a development plan. Certain things may change.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Wendy, has anybody called in with interest in speaking for this?
No, ma'am.
All right, let's go ahead and close the public meeting for it. And we'll continue discussion amongst the commissioners if anybody has any. Otherwise, I'll be looking for a motion regarding this item.
Make a motion to approve.
Does the motion have to include the designation also?
Yes, sir. We would need one motion that includes three things, or three separate motions. One being that it be annexed into the city, the second assigning the zoning district B4, and the third approving or recommending the plan of services in its entirety. So it can be one motion that includes these three, or three separate motions.
All right.
You got it?
Mentioned your motion to include all three, Jamie?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Make a motion to approve to bring into the city, make a motion, follow with the designation of zoning of B4, and also approve the plan of services based on public, based on services.
Okay.
Second.
So we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Pavlich, a second by Commissioner Cooper. The motion is to approve the annexation into the city of this property with the designation of B4 zoning and including the plan of services. Is there any additional discussion on the motion? All right, Nicole, would you please call the roll, then?
Vice Chairman Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Dagenhart?
Yes.
Commissioner Pavlich?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Calhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
And Chairman Wild?
Yes.
Motion approved as stated.
We're going to move on to the second item under new business, and this is to consider subdivision of Lot 1 of the David and Kay Jones property at 122 and 144 HD Crumley Road. Hassan, you are on.
Thank you, ma'am. Just to be sure that you see my screen.
Not yet.
All right, let me get back to it.
Now we do.
Okay, thank you very much. Planning Commissioners, this is a request for the subdivision of this piece of property along South Austin Springs Road and HD Crumley Road. Now, this lot was annexed into the city in June 1990, this piece of property. In that annexation ordinance states that HD Crumley Road, the city accepted HD Crumley Road as a public street, will be maintained by the city. However, both from county records and since annexation, there's never been a right-of-way designated for HD Crumley Road. These red lines designate the current property lines for this piece of property. But if you look at the pavement areas, you know, the lot line even cuts through the pavement area of that street, which loops, it's a loop street, it goes around this way. It currently services this property and this huge piece. So right now, although we have HD Crumley Road as a public street, really, it is still part of this piece of property. So one of the issues we faced in reviewing this plan was designating a right-of-way for HD Crumley Road to a point where, at least, the Department of Public Works was okay with it. The property owners were also okay with it. This would have come before you last month, but we had to delay because we're working on all, trying to sort out all those details. If you look at a sign there on the road, it's a green sign, HD Crumley Road, indicating public street. That's the way it was back in 1990. I've gone back because some of the records, when it was under county's maintenance. This is the street, as I did mention, it loops around this way. This is a driveway that goes into the adjoining houses in this, in this particular area. This driveway goes into this house. This other driveway, this other driveway goes into this property. And the property, HD Crumley Road loops around as shown here, so it goes around like this. There are utilities, water and seawell has looked into these utilities and determined that they are not public utilities, they're not built to public standard. So one of the things we had to do in designating the right-of-way was to make sure that we keep those hydrants and there is a water meter around here. We keep them outside of the proposed public right-of-way, or the proposed designated public right-of-way. In the plot that I submitted to you in the staff packet, I did indicate that staff will make I did indicate our staff will make a recommendation on this at this meeting because we're still working on the details of designating the right of way. That has been worked out. The area of this property and its beautiful area, let me step back. Excuse me, this beautiful area, you know, of this, of this property, we've really looked at it in terms of topography, uh, natural factors of the site. If it were subdivided, it would really contain about twenty lots, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two lots at most. So we think that with a forty feet right of way for a lane, uh, that will be sufficient for any future subdivision of that property if it comes to that. So the plot as shown designates a forty feet right of way on both sides is irregular. We've, we've tried to strengthen this up, the developer has given up some property for us to be able to create that, you know, somewhat uniform right of way. If you look in this particular area, for example, the current boundary or lot line jogs in. We've tried to, to strengthen that to the full extent possible. There is this underground culvert that will extend under a portion of the right of way. This hedge area, that's an easement for the maintenance of that culvert by uh, the developer and the owner of that underground drainage infrastructure. Staff recommends approval of this plant.
Ish.
Alright, questions for staff? It looks like Commissioner Cooper has many.
Well, I'm, I'm still thinking. Um, how, how come we can't get a proper right of way?
This is the proper right of way.
Well, I, I mean, how, how large is that whole piece of property right there? The, the large piece that's undeveloped?
This large, this, this one?
I'm having trouble seeing your cursor based on, yeah.
Okay, maybe let me use, let me use this on our screen.
Basically, basically the property to the right of the culvert.
The property to the right, this one.
Again.
I went into this or to this lot that, this is the lot that they intend to create with this subdivision plot. Basically, they are cutting, let me step back a bit and show you this. Uh, what they're doing in this subdivision proposal is cutting off a lot from this bigger piece right here. So they are creating, carrying this lot, uh, which is this, that cut out piece is going to be zero point five seven two acres. The rest of the property out here, that is about eleven acres.
So my concern is what, what about subsequent development of that eleven acres?
It will be access, it will be access. One of the reasons we require that from year to year be forty feet is for the development of a lane, because the right of way of a lane is forty feet. So if in future, right now, there is already a single family house on this house. Already exists on the site. If in future that is sold to someone, a developer, and he decides to subdivide it, then he will have enough right of way. Actually, it can go up to fifty feet. Because this area is still piece of, part of this piece of property, all of this.
Go back, go back to that previous, I, I can't see your, your cursor on this view, but the other one I can, okay, there.
Can you see it on this one?
Yes, yes.
Okay, um. So if in future, let me step forward, okay? So this area, right here.
Okay, I can see it now.
Okay, this, this area is still piece of that larger P, that, that larger property that has been left out there. The right way designated for H D Crumley from year to year is forty feet. From year to year is seventeen feet. So if in future, this really needs to be a local street, which I doubt, based, just based on the size of that property and the natural features of the site, we don't think that it can take more than twenty-four lots. A lane generally goes up to twenty-four lots by subdivision regulations. So we don't think it's going to go up to that, but if it comes to that, then they will have enough room to be able to create a fifty feet right of way that will extend into this piece.
So that, that's a separate access off, off Austin Springs Road?
Yes.
Got you, got you, okay. Thanks.
You're welcome, sir.
Alright, additional questions of staff? Alright, let's go ahead and open up the public hearing then, so I'll have Wendy share her screen. And again, we'll do as we did before. I'll suggest we continue discussion amongst ourselves while we allow people to call in to facilitate moving along here.
Mr. Chairman, this is Travis with the Water and Sewer Department. If I could, please make a comment.
Yes.
Um, Hassan, I, I believe you said that, and, and you, you, you decided that the utilities were not up to public standard and that they had to be excluded from the public right of way that's being dedicated. And this is the, the first time, on my screen, this is the first time I've seen the proposed uh, right of way that's actually being dedicated uh, at tonight's meeting. But, so I haven't got a chance to, to make that distinction of, of where these utilities are. I know the, specifically the sewer line is not up to a public standard, I know that. But can, can you show me in there where that is? Can, can you zoom in on that possibly and, and show where that is in, in the right of way that's, that's being proposed for dedication?
Uh, followed my discussion with you when this came in and you did indicate where the utility lines were. Uh, I believe you and I had that discussion. Let me, let, let me get down to, to the screen, hopefully I can zoom this.
Share your screen again, Hassan.
Oh, sorry about that. Is it visible now, please?
Yes.
Travis, can you see the screen?
Yes.
So this is your, this is your fire hydrant, this is your water meter, and that is your sewer right there. So what you have within the public right of way is this section of the underground culvert. And this note three is on the plot to provide an easement for its maintenance.
Okay, where is the sewer line? It looks to me like the sewer line, that the private sewer line is within the public right of way. Uh, am I seeing that wrong?
This sewer line exists, is already within the existing right of way. This, this one, this water, are, are you referring to this one?
The sewer line, I believe he's got it notated with a line with an S.
Yes, this one, yeah, there is a sewer, the existing sewer line that is within the existing. It's basically under the asphalt, partially under the existing asphalt. There is, there is no way we can have that, that right of way without that being there, without that being within the public right of way. Otherwise, we would have to be paving, uh, basically going out there and, and digging the grass to create a new road. Because where you currently have the pavement, as this was developed before we ever annexed it, the sewer line was within the asphalt, so.
Okay, we, uh, as previously determined by, by legal, um, we can't over, we can't assume a right of way uh, or accept it with private utilities in it. So I guess in this situation, um, our department would be accepting this substandard utility as public. Am, am I understanding that correctly?
I don't know of any legal restriction. Uh, they are probably utilities within private right of ways, easements just have to be created for them. Especially in a situation in which if we're building a new subdivision today, we will not permit that. If we're building a new, somebody comes in and proposes a new subdivision. But when you have a situation that exists already and you're trying to fix it to the full extent possible, uh, we just have to accommodate that. The same way Public Works Department would have preferred not to have this infrastructure within the public right of way, but, but I realize that that is the reality. This was annexed as ease, it should have been fixed back then in nineteen ninety. This is what, thirty years after that, we are having to deal with it. We just have to, to accept the reality as it is to the full extent possible. But I don't know of any legal restriction that says there cannot be private utilities within public right of ways. They are everywhere that, that, there are many of these in this city. We just create easements for them.
Private, I'm sorry, the question was private utility in a public right of way. But basically, we're, we would be assuming ownership of this substandard line, and i- is that, am I understanding that correctly?
No, those lines, this plot does not dedicate those lines as public, no.
So, so back, back in nineteen ninety, the city didn't accept, accept the utilities. And today, they're not, you're not recommend, we're, we're not accept, accepting them today.
Yes, sir. It wasn't, I've gone through, I have the document here for the plan of services as it were in nineteen ninety for the annexation of the property. Uh, it doesn't mention anywhere that the city was going to take those utility lines and make them public.
Does that help your concern, Travis?
Um, uh, not really, but that's okay.
Well, well, yeah, guidance from you.
I'm sorry.
We need your guidance, so.
Well, okay, previously, I know when, when people have tried to, to dedicate public right of ways, uh, I'm thinking of Princeton Gardens. I, I think maybe there may be some overlap with, uh, some of your all's tenures. Um, um, they tried to dedicate it as a public right of way and, uh, maintain private utilities within that. And, uh, at the time, it, it was our, um, legal, um, uh, our staff attorney at that time had, uh, said that, that that wasn't a viable option, and there was, there was numerous, there was numerous reasons for that. Um, so I, I'm, I'm not exactly sure I'm on the same page. I, I don't really like, uh, reviewing this, um, for the first time tonight, I'll say that, so, but, um, thank you all for your consideration.
No, I appreciate those comments, Travis. Do, Hassan, do we need to get city staff to review this and help give us guidance before we move forward with it?
Uh, ma'am, you, the planning commission can defer this if, if you want to do that, but it's important, I state for the record. This was put in city view for review by staff. And I had this discussion with a different departments in terms of the specific location of utilities and what will have to be kept outside of the public right of way and what will have to be included. This plot has been delayed for two months. The applicant initially submitted it for our review in May, for more than two months. And it's been going through this process of what can we take, what can we not take? And here we are in August. Uh, I have had this discussion with a different departments. It's, it's not the first time any, any department is reviewing it. We established very clearly what are the principles, if we're going to take this, what are the things we'll have to take into consideration? Public Works was very clear, they were not, it is very advisable, and planning accepts this with them. That is necessary for us to establish a right of way on this plot. Uh, otherwise, it would have simply been a minor subdivision plot, it would never come to you as, as a state law to review it today. Would have, it would have simply been approved as a minor subdivision plot and recorded. But because of that right of way issue, it was necessary to bring it in front of you. And both with planning, uh, Public Works, uh, Water and Sewer, we had agenda review meeting for planning commission items. We did discuss these principles in terms of what has to be kept outside of the public right of way. Designating the right of way, that was clearly discussed, so. But if you, you have the option of deferring this, state law gives you sixty days. If a plot is brought in front of you, you have sixty days to make a decision on it. If you do not decide within sixty days, then it is automatically approved by law. So.
Fair. Um, uh, first of all, uh, somebody's got their volume up and it's, it's, it's causing an echo, but, uh, second, um, Alan, I don't want to put you in a bind, so I want you to feel free to answer this as delicately as possible, but can you provide a little insight on this in terms of, um, staff review, uh, and, uh, any comments that, that you had on this particular subdivision?
Yes, uh, your staff brought it to me probably two months ago and, uh, I still worked with, uh, Monty and, uh, did some sketching around on it similar to what, uh, has come back to you tonight, but I dropped that effort uh, as it started to get very complicated and advised Monty to just, uh, uh, communicate with the surveyor and the owner about what the shape of the right of way was. But my concern was, we, we searched, uh, I, I advised him to search the minutes and search, uh, the, uh, see if the plan of services for that annexation said anything more specific about the right of way width. At the very minimum, we took only the asphalt. And that'd be a substandard right of way width, I want the shape of the right of way. They want to subdivide, I'm concerned, I don't know why my, uh, speech is coming in delayed double. It's not got anything to do with our microphone here. Um, but, uh, what, um, I was concerned with is that the.
Alan, what we're talking, maybe we can have everybody mute, that may help, I keep giving that, getting that echo too.
What I was concerned about is the, if we only by common law through the annexation took only the width of the asphalt, that would not be a sufficient right of way to create more lots. And I was suggesting that we get a standard right of way width at this time, since the property owner wanted to create one new lot, it would be an opportunity with this plat to create sufficient right of way once and for all. Um, the, the work passed on to Hassan Gay, and he's worked out, I think, a good solution to getting a, uh, standard right of way of forty feet with potential to get an extra width, uh, on the right-hand side coming in, in the future, if we need fifty feet, it's there. So I, I was satisfied with the right of way part, we would be at least fixing an old problem and getting a right of way wider than the pavement. We had the prop, the problem with a property line crossing the pavement, is it, uh, on one of the earlier plats, that's been fixed. The culvert coming across is a private culvert. Uh, we don't know who installed it, the city doesn't have any records of it ever belonging to us. We had no reason to be back in there putting a culvert in. So we're considering that to be a private culvert, it crosses under the, the new right of way. It crosses under the existing right of way, and that's why there's an easement for that. What Hassan Gay has told us is that the sewer line that was in question is also under the asphalt, which means it was under what was considered public right of way before. This doesn't fix that, it's still under public right of way. That doesn't necessarily mean that we have to take ownership of the culvert or the sewer line. Uh, notes can be added to the plat to make that clear if necessary. Um, so, um, I probably triggered to go in the direction of fixing the right of way width problem. And Hassan Gay has tried the best he can to balance that between having private utilities underneath the right of way, uh, and we've got to understand that it's already under a portion of public right of way. Um, I think in the Princeton Gardens that was mentioned, what happened there is, uh, they installed private water lines and sewer lines, and we did not inspect them, so we weren't willing to take them over. And, uh, we did, the Public Works Department. And, uh, we did, the Public Works Department did not want private utility lines under a new public street, so we weren't going to take the street over. It was originally going to be all private and that, uh, economy, uh, crack up back ten years ago caused them to want to come back and make it public. The, the fact that the Public Works Department didn't want people trying to maintain and dig up and repair private lines under the public street and have us end up having to fix the patch if they didn't fix it right caused that not to come in as a, uh, public street. Um, the issues were very clear that they, that system had not been installed properly to be a public water or sewer line. But it was, what stopped it was the Public Works didn't want it. Well, in this case, the utilities are already under the asphalt. They're not adding anything to the, uh, right of way. And I think fixing the right of way width issue, uh, kind of outweighs the fact that we have a, a utility already under the asphalt.
Thanks, Alan. Hassan, um, will you unmute? And, uh, can you provide, um, a little background, um, on you had indicated that, uh, St. Landy has, has been delayed to getting to this point? Can you explain how that's the case?
Yes, as Alan indicated, when he submitted this plat, uh, for review, there was this question of how do we get, we, we need to, to create a right of way. Um, Public Works indicated that. And we started working with him towards a solution. He was very, very forthcoming, ready to create a right of way, whatever right of where we wanted, he was okay with that. Uh, the property owner or the surveyor, they had no issues. It was really at the level of city, what do you want? How much, how much of this right of way do you want? How, how good can it look? Um, I worked on it, we put it in the system for review, got comments from staff, sent it back to, to him, he made some corrections, send them back to me. Uh, I walked on the plat and there was one issue that was giving us all the problems, even as I was doing the review and trying to draw it up in, in Blue Beam and create the right of way. The graphic bar for the scale had one is to a hundred. But the dimensions were one is to forty. So I was using one is to a hundred for all the measurements and the plat wasn't working. Because there was that, there was that problem that the surveyor had created on the plat. Until sometime last month, uh, I kind of found out that this, this probably did a print of the plat and I discovered that this may be where the problem is coming from. And I had Monty do some work on it, check it out. And they will go back to the surveyor and he confirmed, he was like, oh yeah, I had made that error. I'm going to correct it and send it back to you. Uh, I'd pushed towards staff towards getting this on the planning commission agenda for last month. But it didn't get on the agenda because water and sewer asked that we should give them more time to determine whether those utilities were public or private. Uh, I removed it, initially I put it on the agenda already. I removed it on the agenda to have them make that determination. I took about two weeks or more for them to make that determination and then they came back to me and said, this, the, the fire hydrant, the water, the, um, manholes, they were not built, those, those utilities were not built to public street standard. So at the, uh, agenda review meeting for planning commission, we basically established as a principle that those utilities that are are private to the full extent possible, we're trying to keep them outside as we're working on designating the right of way, we'll keep them outside of the public right of way. The ones that are already within the right of way, especially on that, they ask for, there's nothing we can do. We just have to accommodate those ones. Uh, question that we had up there in the air was whether to recommend a forty feet right of way or a fifty feet right of way. So I had to work on the developability of that giant piece to make a determination whether forty feet would be best at this time or fifty feet. And even future fifty feet is needed, where can that fifty feet come from? It was based on that that we came up with, with, with this particular, uh, design.
Thank you for that. So to kind of bring us back full circle for the benefit of the commission, um, uh, and for Chairwoman Wild, um, will you reiterate the exact request and then just reiterate staff's recommendation uh, on the request and if there are any conditions?
The request is to approve the part of the David and Jay Jones property plat. And staff's recommendation is that this plat be approved with the designation of the H D Cromley Road right of way as now shown on this plat. And as an additional condition, we can add a note on the plat spelling out clearly that the utility lines, water, sewer lines shown within this probably right of way are private to privately owned and privately maintained.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you for that clarification. So if I'm hearing that correctly, I feel a little better because initially I was under the impression that perhaps, um, we had held this up for several months, but it seems as though it was more of an issue with the surveyor and then maybe a month um, hold up on our part. Is that correct?
Um, yes, a month hold up, maybe more than a month, more than a month and a half hold up on our part. And then about two weeks hold up on the part of the surveyor.
We have not exceeded the sixty days yet, at which time it would just automatically be approved, correct?
Now, the sixty days begin when it comes in front of you as planning commission, not when it is submitted for review. So the sixty days will begin today.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, I'm going to ask Wendy, did we have anybody from the public call in wishing to speak on this item?
Ama'am.
Okay, let's go ahead and close the public hearing unofficially as we continue our discussion. So in light of this information that we've received, I'm anxious to hear input from other commissioners regarding this item. Don't everybody jump at once.
Everybody's bashful.
I, I'll give my opinion then if nobody else wants to speak.
Please do.
I, it, I, I, I appreciate Travis bringing up the concern of Public Works Department, but I also seem to be at ease with the understanding that because this was annexed thirty years ago, as is, we've perhaps righted several other items on this plat that make it much more desirable than it was when it was annexed thirty years ago. It's not perfect, but if we can leave the designation on the plat that the utility lines are privately owned and will be privately maintained, then I'm comfortable with accepting it as it is presented.
I agree with that.
I also agree with that.
I agree with that. I move that we accept the plat as presented by Hassan, acknowledging as you just mentioned that the plat will have a notation that utilities will be, are currently privately owned and will be privately maintained.
And do we also need to include in the motion the designation of H D Cromley Road right of way as shown on the plat? Specifically Hassan or?
Yes, ma'am, that'll be very important.
Okay.
I'll amend my motion to identify it as the H D Cromley right of way agreement plat.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Dagenhart, is there a second?
I'll second that.
And a second from Commissioner Aldridge. Okay, so the motion is to accept the Jones property subdivision with the designation of the H D Cromley Road right of way as shown on the plat and with an additional notation to be shown on the plat that reflects that the utility lines are privately owned and shall be privately maintained. Is there any additional discussion of the motion? All right, hearing none then, Nicole, would you please call the roll?
Hold on, hold on, I'm sorry. I was, I was muted, um. All right, I, I, I'm just a little lost, I have one question. So if, if the developer goes in and puts twenty-two houses back into the vacant lot, do they tie into the privately owned utilities or are there other ways to tie into public utilities?
There are public utilities along Austin Springs Road, they can tie public utilities from there. Here they're developing, doing an entirely new subdivision that big.
It'll be a totally unique system, correct, to those twenty-two lots?
Yes, it would be, call it an independent system on its own with the lines coming from Austin Springs Road. And those lines will have to be built to, uh, the standards for water and sewer. Except over to the water and sewer department.
Thank you. Keep in mind that Travis is still on the line, so Travis, could you confirm or clarify?
There would have to be a, um, new sewer line installed, um. Uh, there's a good chance that our department would have to, uh, to do that. Uh, usually we have a commitment to properties, uh, and we don't require people to do work inside public right of ways, uh, developers, that is. So, uh, yeah, there would have to be a new line laid.
So with that line, would you, would you get rea- would the city get reimbursed from the developer or how does that work?
Uh, usually not, no, we, we don't, we don't get reimbursed, we, we just depend on, uh, rates and taffies.
Okay, thank you, Travis.
No problem.
Okay, is there additional discussion of the motion? All right, hearing none, then I'll have Nicole call the roll this time. Do y'all need me to reread the motion for everybody or is everybody okay?
We got it.
All right.
Vice Chairman Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Dagenhart?
Yes.
Commissioner Poblitch?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Calhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
And Chairman Wild?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay. Hassan, can you quit sharing your screen for just a second so I can read our next item agenda, please? Thank you. All right, then the next item under new business is item six three, consider the Osborne Place, I'm sorry. We just did that, no, we didn't. Consider the Osborne Place Town Home Subdivision final plat for property at twenty-eight oh two West Walnut Street.
All right, let me return to sharing my screen.
Okay.
I hope you can see my screen, please.
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Uh, this is a plat for this town home subdivisions at two eight zero two West Walnut Street. This is the property, is really in fear development to some extent in the sense that initially it had, there were one, two, three, four, there were, there were three houses on this side. Two of them were demolished and one was incorporated into this town home development. Actually, this piece here, that was a single family home on the site that has been incorporated into this, uh, town home development. This is the project as it is, see on that construction, uh, generally. There are a couple of subdivision infrastructure that have not been completed. The deceleration lane in this particular area that has not been completed, it's still in the construction, there is a sidewalk that has to be constructed, that improvement has not yet been completed. There are also, uh, stormwater management infrastructure that goes down uh, further this way and the side stabilization elements for stormwater management purposes that need to be provided. The engineering division has, uh, inspected the site and estimated that a bond amount of twenty-three thousand, six hundred dollars necessary to complete those improvements. Uh, this is the subdivision plat. A portion of the sidewalk is going to be on private property, sort of an easement. Perpetual easement is being dedicated for that, that's common practice we have here in the city. Um, staff recommends approval of the plat subject to the developer posting a twenty-three thousand, six hundred dollars bond for the completion of necessary improvements.
Okay, thank you, Hassan. Are there any questions of staff at this time? And I'm going to ask Wendy to go ahead and open the public hearing for us by sharing that screen and has anybody called in ahead of time on this item?
No, ma'am, just a moment.
Okay. Hassan, can you unshare your screen, please?
Thank you, um, sorry, let me get that.
This is Alan Cantrell, um, I met with the, the owner builder this morning. He's hoping to get a lot of work done before he needs to pick the plat up. We need to prove it with the bond. But the approval needs to include the permission for the staff to reduce the bond. If he finishes the work, there may not be a need for bond or even if he gets half the work done, we can reduce the bond to half the cost. So when you get to the point of making your motion and approval, include permission for staff to reduce the bond.
All right, thank you, Alan. Okay, again, we're going to leave the public hearing officially open in case anybody does want to call in. Am I muted? No. Okay, but I'm going to open this up for discussion amongst commissioners in the interim.
I, I don't see any issues.
I don't either.
Trying to say something, Jamie, or?
Same, I don't see anything.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Deflecting.
Anybody else? All right, I guess we'll officially close this public hearing then. And hearing no additional discussion, I am looking for a motion. And in the motion, whoever makes it, please be sure to include granting permission for staff to reduce the bond should the developer meet any of the requirements.
I will go ahead and make that, whoops, maybe, yeah, I'll go ahead and make that motion to approve, um, placing the, um, townhouses in the subdivision um, with the twenty-three thousand, six hundred dollar bond for the improvements, but also giving the staff permission to reduce that if they pay, um, their obligations.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Aldridge, a second by Commissioner Whitfield, is there any additional discussion? Okay, so the motion on the floor is the final, is to approve the final plat for property at twenty-eight oh two West Walnut Street, the Osborne Place Town Home Subdivision with a bond of twenty-three thousand, six hundred for the deceleration lane sidewalk and stormwater infrastructure. But a notation should be placed to permit the staff to reduce the bond should the developer meet any of those obligations. All right, any additional discussion? All right, Nicole, will you please call the roll then? Nicole, you're muted.
Vice Chairman Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Dagenhart?
Yes.
Commissioner Pavlich?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Calhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
And Chairman Wild?
Yes.
Motion approved as stated.
Continuing with new business, we're on item 6.4, consider release of a $31,000 bond for Park Place Phase 3 subdivision. Hassan, you're up.
Let me get back to sharing my screen. Hope you can see my screen, please.
Yes.
Yes.
This is a request by the developer, Mr. John Isaac, for the city to release the bond for this subdivision. Initially, when the Public Works Department inspected this site, the initial determination was that everything was okay and we could release an entire bond. Staff report therefore had the release of the entire $31,000 bond, which you required when this plat was approved sometime last year. However, today, following the rains, Alan went out again and inspected the site and determined, as you see from these pictures, that there is some, there is need for additional stabilization measures on the side. There is erosion that is ongoing. You have all this soil being washed to the sidewalk. This needs to be fixed. There is a section, the ASBUD that was submitted and was approved. Get the impression that the ditch that was intended to carry this water into the lake was constructed as shown on the construction plans, but that was not the case. A section of the ditch is missing that is creating this problem. So staff is modifying its recommendation, please. The recommendation at this time is that the bond amount be rather reduced from $31,000 to $10,000. The rest of this, this $10,000 will be reserved by the city for the completion of these improvements. Basically, the V-shaped ditch that needs to be constructed, the stabilization of the side and the updating of the ASBUD. If the developer goes ahead, gets all of this done himself, then he can request that the rest of the $10,000 be released. If he doesn't get that done on time, then the city can use the money to complete those improvements. So staff's recommendation is that you reduce, instead of releasing the total bond amount, please, rather reduce the amount from $31,000 to $10,000.
Okay, all right. Are there questions of staff at this time?
I mean, I have the obvious question. Hassan, can you tell me why? So originally it says the city engineer had inspected the site, determined that all the improvements had been completed. So was that just not done after a rain or do you think something's changed or what do you think happened?
I think the rain is part of it, but Alan is here, he can throw more light on that. I know there was a day I went out on this side myself and I didn't see some of this wash out the situation we have now. But I think the recent rains might have played into this. I would allow Alan to speak detail more on that, please.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry, Alan, I forgot you were on. Please go ahead.
Sure. We have a staff member that inspects during construction and he follows up for me. He represents me. I'm ultimately responsible. But if he comes and reports to me that all improvements have been finished, then I'm going to report to you that they're finished. The ditch that is shown here is very critical. It takes the balance of the vacant property that this developer owns, which is upland of the new subdivision and diverts it to the lake. This allowed the developer to put in a smaller water quality device that filters the water from the new homes in the street. The inspection I made today is unusual. I rarely go out personally and do a follow-up after my staff has made an inspection. But I did on this one to be prepared to answer questions if there were any. And I happened to notice the ditch looked like it was too short. It didn't make it over a little ridge that would divert the water to the lake. Instead, it's dumping the water down across that lot that you see there in the picture on the left where the second call-out box is pointing to. The ditch stops about 60 feet past that street stub when it should go on to about 190 feet. If it's left like it is, this was a hard decision for me to make after one of my staff had already reported that it was ready to go. If we accept that ditch as it's constructed, we will send water to the water quality device that doesn't belong there. So I had to make a decision. Do I upset this process by saying it's not ready to go? And look bad or do I ignore it and you guys never know the difference? I had to make the decision. It's better to look bad and have this built right than it is to allow it to go forward as it's built.
Thank you Alan. I'd like to correct you though. You don't look bad at all. I appreciate you stopping this and telling us before we eroded anymore of the property. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
And just to add on that, commissioners, we did call because the developer knew, staff's report was to release the entire bond. So when Alan found this, found out this, we did call the developer, Mr. John Isaac, and explained this to him. And told him we would rather be recommending that the bond amount be reduced to $10,000. He was okay with that.
Okay. Are there additional questions of staff at this time? Hassan, is this one I need to open a public hearing for as well?
Generally, all items before you, it's not a required public hearing by law, but generally by practice, planning commission practices, you often open a public hearing for every item.
Okay. Then at this time, we'll go ahead and open up a public hearing. If anybody watching has any input they wish to share, please feel free to call in and we'd love to listen to your concerns or comments. And as we've done with the previous item agendas, since there is a delay in the broadcast, I'm going to open the floor for additional comments by other commissioners while we leave the public hearing line open. And Wendy, if you'll just let me know if anybody calls in, please.
Hassan, I have a question. The $31,000 bond, what was the timeframe for that? And are we just holding the ten for the rest of the balance of time left on that or are we doing a new bond?
There was no timeframe on that. The subdivision regulations require that it's either an irrevocable, the bond has reported as an irrevocable letter of credit, which basically does not expire, or it has to be a cash bond. So there is no timeframe on that. There is a requirement in the SUBREX that every year staff has to, you know, present any bonds that are hanging out there. Once a year is over, staff has to provide a kind of a status update to the planning commission. But a bond itself does not expire.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any additional comments by commissioners? Wendy, has anybody called in on this item?
No ma'am.
All right, then let's go ahead and close the public hearing on this. And hearing no additional comments, I'm looking for a motion which the staff is asking us to reduce the bond that is currently being held for $31,000 to $10,000. And that is so that they can address additional stabilization measures and complete a missing section of the ditch.
I'd like to move that we reduce the bond of $31,000 for the Park Place Phase 3 subdivision from $31,000 to $10,000.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, was that you Bob?
Yes ma'am.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Whitfield, a second by Commissioner Cooper to reduce the bond from $31,000 to $10,000 on Park Place Phase 3 subdivision. Is there additional discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none, we'll have the roll called, please.
Vice Chairman Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Dagenhart?
Yes.
Commissioner Pavlich?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Calhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
And Chairman Wild?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on to our last item of new business, this is item 6.5 and it is a text amendment, an ordinance to amend Article 2 definitions and Article 6 use requirements by district, Section 6.5, B2, simple business.
Chairwoman Wild, this is my item. Hassan, would you mute just in case anybody walks into your office? Thank you. We've been approached by several folks who are involved in development or redevelopment of our downtown area. Inquiring about the possibility of broadening our residential opportunities in the downtown. As you know, the B2 or the downtown area has historically prohibited first-floor residential. And that's appropriate. That was appropriate at the time as a policy measure to prevent first-floor residential. Number one, it protects the traditional mixed-use form and allows for ground floor spaces to be reserved for economic activity. Traditionally, too, your vertical mixed-use had your residential on the upper floors for privacy concerns, for safety and security measures. But as our downtowns redevelop and grow, there are, we find new opportunities for residential development. The market has changed a little bit. We're not just building vertical mixed-use anymore. We're now finding that warehouse space can be converted or adaptively reused for lofts and things like that. We're finding the market is supportive of what's called live-work. And live-work is where you have someone operating through telework or telecommuting or even operating a niche industry of sort, you know, everything from textiles to candle making to small, to any other type of small manufacturing outfit and can work and live all in the same space. And in fact, our building codes, the International Building Code, the IBC, recognizes live-work and has provisions set up for live-work spaces. So the provision, or so the proposal before you tonight is something that was originally brought to the Legislative Committee back in July. The minutes from that Legislative Committee have been provided to you. And so hopefully you've had an opportunity to take a look at those. And we had originally planned to have this as a discussion item at the July Planning Commission meeting. Unfortunately, due to the length of that meeting, we were not able to do that. We didn't want to hold you up any longer. And so we went ahead and just brought this forward. We are bringing it forward as a request, but hopefully we can have some good, healthy conversation here tonight. One thing I would like to do is I will quickly share my screen and provide just some visual support for much of what I just said. So tell me when you can see my screen. Are you able to see my screen? So this is, this is a shot looking up East Main Street towards the interstate. On both sides, you'll see traditional examples of vertical mixed-use. This is how our downtown and most downtowns were developed traditionally. And so on the first floor, you had your economic activity. This is where you had your retail restaurant, all kinds of mercantile and economic activity. And then on the upper floors, which highlighted in blue, those were reserved for residential. Those were for residential or for office. Somebody needs to unmute, please. The, what we're looking at now are these alternative opportunities for residential. And so what you have on the screen here are two examples in the text that would allow for ground-floor residential to exist. On the left, you'll see an example of a courtyard or an alley or a pedestrian way. There's a number of different things you can call that. There's also a number of different ways that can look. But that is an example of a non-street public space. Now that one in particular is private, but you can have either private or public spaces such as that, that you could easily have residential develop into the rear portions or the center portions of these buildings and allow residential to develop in those areas. On the upper right, you'll see here where you either have traditional voids in the downtown or there was once a building there. But either way, you now have surface parking. And so this is another example where you might have an opportunity for residential develop to have frontage and access from the ground floor. So I'll show you kind of what that looks like using color blocks. I'm having to hide the move around everyone in the meeting here, sorry. So up here on the top right, I'll start here at the top right. You'll see here that most of, well, not most, but many of the buildings in the downtown are through buildings. They are so large, they go all the way from main to market. So this is an example here. And the proposal would preserve these ground floor spaces. This particular one that's in red faces on market. And you'll see that on the other side of the building is the side that faces main. These ground floor spaces would have to be preserved, could not be used for residential. But the upper, of course, and then the center part of the building could potentially be offered for residential develop. And again, this is where they would access in and out of the parking area here. This lower-left picture is on Main Street and looking face-on towards one of the mixed-use buildings. What I wanted to show here was that part of the language allows for access, not frontage, but access. So you'll see here that on either side of these two storefront spaces, you could have a door. And there is a door right here, in fact, that could lead either upstairs to upper units or could lead through a hallway to units in the back that would be found in this center section back here. Hopefully that makes sense. And in fact, there are doors on both sides here. Now I believe both of these doors lead upstairs, but you could have a situation where they act as a hallway or an access point to the rear there. I believe that's it for the slides. The text that was brought before you introduces two new definitions. One is the definition of live-work and then the other is just wanting for clarity to define teleworking. That's something that is becoming, that's more of our lexicon now. So I think it's important that we have that as a definition. And then the other is the amendment proposal to Article 6 where we introduce this concept of ground-floor residential in appropriate spaces. And then the other attachment that was provided to you was the excerpt or the exact language from the IBC on live-work development. Part of our proposal allows for both vertical and horizontal live-work, but again, preserving those ground-floor retail spaces or ground-floor street-front spaces. So I'll turn it back over to you. So I'll turn it back over to you, Chairwoman Wild, and I don't know whether or not anyone from the committee wanted to provide some insight from the committee meeting, but hopefully, there can be some good conversation on this tonight.
All right, thank, yeah, thank you, Preston, and I was part of that committee, so I think we should let committee members speak, but at this moment, let me just ask if there are any questions of staff this time. I'm sorry, did I hear somebody?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Preston, would there be, under the proposed amendments, would there be any condition where we would allow access to a residential ground-floor space through a retail space or through a workspace?
The only time you would be able to access, and that's an excellent question, because that's the definition of live-work, is that you would be able to access residential through the commercial space, but because that is defined separately as a live-work unit, then that occupancy, the occupancy of both the commercial space and the residential space are by the same occupant. Where I believe you would not be able to access through the commercial to a residential is if it was not a live-work situation, and you just, for example, here on the screen, let's take this unit here that faces on the market. This is a separate, independent, commercial unit, and if you had a separate, independent residential unit from the back or in the middle of the building here, you would not be able to access that residential through that commercial space. There would need to be a separate, distinctly separate access point to the residential. However, if it is live-work, as we've defined live-work, and it is occupied by the same individual, the same individuals living there and the same individuals working in that non-residential space, then the building code actually requires that you access through the commercial to the residential, and you cannot do the reverse.
And that coordinates, if you will, with fire codes and access codes and ADA and all that?
It does, yes, sir. I've conferred with Dave McClellan, who's our Development Services Manager and Interim Chief Building Official, on that exact question. How does the, because before we were able to introduce the concept of horizontal live-work, we needed to make sure that we weren't going to violate any of those building codes or any of those separation or fire code issues, and Dave confirmed that based on the way that we have it drafted, we should be good with our building codes.
So one other question. Ben, the resulting, the results will be that we will always have commercials, only commercial space facing our public streets, with the exception of like the doors in your bottom-left example that might provide access to residential spaces either on a subsequent floor or on the same floor.
Correct. That is the intent, and that is how we have it drafted, is that your street-front spaces, meaning facing onto a public street, your street-front spaces must be preserved for commercial use, for commercial activity. You can have an access point on that street front, such as the picture on the bottom left, but your frontage, the actual frontage of the residential units themselves, the frontage of the residential units themselves are limited to those interior or non-street spaces, either public or private.
Thank you.
What if it's a corner lot or a corner like this corner building? Can you, one side of it be residential and one side of it be business?
Well, are you referencing?
Corner of Market in Maine, for instance, or East Main and Buffalo. So if I had that corner building, can one side of it be frontage and the other side be residential?
You could have an access point for residential, but you would not be able to have your, the frontage of your residential unit on any of those streets.
On any of the streets, okay, thank you.
So Preston, just for my clarification, so it's just like little alleyways and things like that, that we're going to, that you're proposing to allow the residential, correct? Or going through the doorway here? So no public street is going to have the residential at all on it?
Correct, correct. Now, there'd be an access point, but not the frontage of the unit itself. So allow me to stop sharing this screen, and I'm going to go back to, I'm going to go and share the screen of the text itself. So here's a split screen of our agenda tonight, and hopefully, everyone can see this. The proposal for the B two, you'll see here under permitted uses, right now, the language reads residential dwellings on the upper floors of buildings only. What we're suggesting is subject to the area regulations below. So you go to the area regulations below, access, or let me start with the initial sentence. Any building in the B two shall primarily reserve ground-floor space along principal street frontages for non-residential uses. Ground-floor residential dwellings may be permitted in the following special circumstances. Access points, and then frontage, ground-floor residential dwellings may front upon, including access and fenestration, meaning your windows and doors, any private or non-street public space, including but not limited to courtyards, alleys, parking areas, walkways, under the following circumstances. Notwithstanding any building code provisions, so hopefully, that addresses the concern that Commissioner Cooper had. Frontage upon private property shall provide a permanent access easement to the closest public right-of-way. So that's an example of going through the parking lot. And then frontage upon public rights-of-way, including but not limited to alleys and walkways. So you do have examples of public right-of-way that is not a street. So alleys are not a street, but it may still be a public right-of-way. Frontage upon public rights-of-way, including alleys and walkways, may include minor encroachments such as a stoop or an awning accessing into your unit. But encroachments cannot impede vehicular or pedestrian movement. Those are fairly standard, or that is fairly standard language. And then you get into the live-work units, and the live-work units are specifically defined units. Not only do we now define them in our, or what's being proposed in the zoning code, but they are also defined in the building code.
I was also.
I can remove that from the screen because you all have that in your packet. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, Preston, I was just kind of following up and agreeing with what you said. I was on the subcommittee for this as well, and I think a lot of us on the subcommittee had the same concerns that we didn't want to lose some of our street frontage and for residential units. And I think this language, the way it's been created, really guides that away from those spaces, protects those for the city. And we had several developers that were at the meeting as well, and they also voiced concerns that there is a demand for these units in the city right now, and we're not able to provide for them. And so I think this is a good move for us. So I'm happy to be involved with it, and I think I think I should go forward.
It's a shame, too, that Matt Manley's not here tonight because I believe he was in the subcommittee meeting as well, and we were presented with several examples of this and how it's been developed in Knoxville and other areas, and very beneficially. And there was also discussion about the size of many of our commercial spaces right now, particularly those that do go from one street to the other, that they're simply unrentable because of the size that they are. There's not the demand for that type of space downtown, and so this will enable additional development to occur downtown.
There, a lot of them are just too big. No one needs that much space. So this should help, I think, do some infill downtown, put more people downtown, and more development, I think, which would be better for all of us.
Yeah, I totally agree, too. It's being just rolled. Oops, being rolled off.
Kimberly, you're muted right now.
For some reason, it keeps muting, but anyway, let's try it again. I do think, as someone just rolling off of the JCPA and seeing all the things that have happened down there and success in the last five years, I really think there is a need for this. You know, people more and more are wanting to live, work, and play down there, and I think this will just be opening opportunities for more people to come down there, and once you have more people down there, you're going to have more activity. You're going to have more, you know, visiting retail stores or eating at the restaurants, that kind of thing. I'm in favor of it.
Okay, if there's no additional questions of staff at this point, I'd like to go ahead and open the public hearing in case anybody has called in wishing to make any comments either for or against this proposal.
I know I have on the line Philip Cox and Shane Abram, requested by Preston, and there's another caller on the line, but I'm not sure of the phone number or if he's speaking for this item or what.
Well, should we open it one at a time, or how do you do that, Wendy?
Is Shane and Philip together on this item, Preston?
Yes, I believe so. And just for clarification, I didn't ask for those individuals to call in. Those individuals are a part of this conversation. They chose to call in. And, but yes, those two, I believe, are going to be speaking on the same matter.
Okay, I'll unmute. Mr. Cox, can you hear us?
Yes, I think I can probably speak for Shane and I, but unless Shane wants to make a comment.
Shane, can you hear us as well?
I can, thank you.
Okay.
I just was going to say, obviously, we'd love to see this for developers of downtown. I think it's an opportunity to improve spaces downtown to allow for this, and we just love to see it approved, and we appreciate the consideration and the quick move for this. And just for clarity, Greg Cox is the other person on the line. He just texted me.
Okay, I'll bring him in as well. Thank you.
I can, and I got Greg Cox, Six Llewellyn Wood. I really don't have much to add. I was just kind of listening in to just kind of hear the conversation to see if there was anything that kind of came up that I maybe wanted to put some input on, so yeah, I don't have much to add unless, you know, right now at this time.
Chairwoman Wild, it's okay, while we're in the middle of the public hearing, can I put on the screen? Unfortunately, Matt was not able to be with us tonight. I think he's taking care of his kiddos, and so we need family to come first. And so I'm going to share my screen. This is West Jackson Street in Knoxville that was shown to the subcommittee, and this is what was shown to us. I believe Greg Cox pointed this out to us. So I wanted to show to you the example that was provided. So can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
If I could quickly, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if I can quickly, the ones that have called in, could you mute your computers or whatever you're watching the YouTube version of this on? It's getting lots of feedback. Thank you.
So I'm zoomed in here on downtown Knoxville. I want to zoom out just so you can see where I am. Jackson Street off of Gay, and so these buildings that were redeveloped in here, you'll see that residential units access this private space. It's a parking lot. I don't know if this is a public parking lot or a private parking lot, but this non-street frontage, you'll see you've got residential units accessing this space right in here. You also have, and just for the sake of conversation, because this is truly private space back in here, but you also have, back in here, you have a courtyard. And so you have the opportunity to provide residential units accessing this courtyard back in here, but then also the side of the building here fronting onto this non-street space. And then all of your commercial spaces, your non-residential spaces, forgive me, your non-residential spaces are preserved along Jackson and Gay. Just to provide a little visual based on what was shown at the committee meeting, and maybe any of the individuals on the telephone can correct me or provide clarity based on what I've just.
So Preston, along the wall, the brick wall that fronts on the parking lot, those first-floor spaces could be residential under the present proposed amendment?
That is correct.
Okay.
As well as the interior courtyard spaces.
On the first floor.
Spaces back in here on the first floor on the interior, opening onto the interior courtyard. This is just one of those situations, one of those examples where, you know, like I had mentioned in my opening remarks, downtowns developed in the same traditional fashion all over the country, and you found this situation all over the country. Much of what we have in our downtowns predated a lot of codes, really zoning codes. Building codes came around, obviously, for mainly for life safety, but a lot of our zoning codes came around for aesthetic reasons. And so our codes got us into a situation where it prevented this type of activity. And then when we began to see redevelopment of our downtowns in the eighties and nineties and early two thousands, many of our zoning codes that had been put in place in the eighties and nineties or even earlier prevented this type of thing. And so this is where the market is coming back and saying, hey, guys, let's allow for that flexibility that we used to have in our downtowns back before we had the zoning code. We don't want to throw the zoning code out, but we want to allow for the flexibility in our downtowns.
Absolutely.
Wendy, was there anybody else who called in other than the three individuals we've already spoken with?
No, ma'am.
Okay, and did any of you all want to add any additional comments? I'm talking to Shane or?
I do have a question in the comment. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
I agree with all the comments that have been made. I think we've seen other markets. Knoxville was highlighted that has done this successfully and has helped put people downtown, which we need to support all the businesses. And the only thing that may have been said that I didn't catch was the thoughts, and maybe we haven't gotten to that detail, is what is the minimum storefront square footage that would be allowed on the front or the back? Is that something that we're going to still look into, or did I miss that part? I'm sorry.
You didn't miss it. We had not discussed it, and that was going to be my next question, whether, is there anything in this proposed amendment, Preston, that is going to have a minimum requirement for the storefront square footage? I mean, what is to prevent somebody from basically using the entire first floor as residential and just having a very small mock space that presents itself as commercial?
Largely, that's going to be driven by the building code. I think that one thing that we discussed at the committee level is we do want to prevent situations where we have faux commercial frontages. But if someone is finishing out a commercial space or if they're finishing out a residential space, there are square footage minimums and certain occupation or occupancy requirements under the building code and the fire code. and certain occupation or occupancy requirements under the building code and the fire code. So I think that the building code is going to be able to, to drive that and still, or and, and prevent those, those those, those faux situations. What I would hate to do is to start picking a number. So let's just, just for the sake of our, of our conversation and for the sake of the question. If we were to say that a minimum downtown residential, I mean, non-residential space needed to be 5,000 square feet, somebody, we just know how it works. Somebody's going to come along and say, you know, I can fit a little burrito joint in 2,500 square feet, 3,000 square feet. You know, in Charleston, South Carolina, where I spent many years, you have some of the best pizza in the world in a space that is probably no longer allowed to, to exist, but once you start determining thresholds, it is almost certain, and at least I can just say from my experience over the years, that the minute you establish a threshold, somebody's going to need to be on either side of that. So I think what we need to do is we need to recognize the other codes that are in place and and if you find that tonight, this is something that is, that creates a little bit of conflict for you and you would rather have Dave McClellan on the call to be able to answer that, and we bring this back. I don't want to give heartburn to the, to the folks who are on the call regarding that, but I, I feel comfortable and confident with the ability that the building code can drive those, those occupancy requirements.
To make sure I understand, then, Preston, based on Shane's question or comment, in theory, under the proposed amendment, as long as the developer allowed or provided access from private property and, and let's say the other, the other three perimeter walls of the building were all on public streets, he could literally use that whole first floor for residential.
Say that again, Jimmy, for him.
Yeah, I guess what I'm getting at, can, can you get your, your picture back up there?
Sure. Which one?
The one at Jackson Street down in Knoxville.
Sure.
My question is, and let's just take that building that, that opens, the one, one right in the middle of your picture that opens onto that parking lot. As long as the developer provided access there on the first floor from the, from the parking lot side, would he be required to provide any retail space along Jackson?
He would be required to preserve this space, all of this frontage. Now, there could be an access point. Remember, we talked about access points. There could be a door. I mean, it would, it would really not be necessary, but there could be an access point along this frontage here, getting back into the residential if there was a hallway or something. Again, you're getting into the interior design and layout, but there could be an access point. Otherwise, the entire frontage must be preserved for non-residential. Now, so then what that leads us to is the question of, of amount of square footage. My concern with, with, with laying out a minimum square footage is that now we're impacting the market's ability to be flexible in their lease ups. So here's where I would want to lean back on both Philip and Greg Cox and then Mr., and then Shane Abraham. If we start identifying minimum square footages, it may, it may prevent them from being able to carve that up into a number of different spaces. They could, let's say they get a tenant that wants this entire frontage, you know, and then the, the depth of whatever that is. But they may find that, you know, the market's just not, not, not taking that particular space. It's not close enough to Gay Street. For some reason, it's not, it's not leasing. So building owner decides, you know what, I think I'm going to carve that up into three different non-residential spaces, or I'm going to carve it up into four different spaces. As long as it's able to meet the building code occupancy requirements, I don't see why we, the government, should say whether or not you're going to have one space in there, you're going to have two, three, four. So I would want to lean on those who are in that world to be able to respond to that better. Where I have concerns with setting minimums.
That's, that's not where I'm coming from. What I'm, I'm, I'm really coming from the opposite end that, that from, from a, a community development, downtown improvement, trying to encourage commercial retail downtown, we don't want to lose that, that space totally. In other words, we, we won't, we won't commercial in there, right?
Absolutely.
But if, if Philip and Greg and Shane decided that they could rent that whole floor for residential, could they do that? As long as they provided access from that private, that private parking lot.
They would not be able, they would be able to rent the entire from, you know, basically from this, and I'm just for the sake of, of this picture, from this point back, all of that ground floor space could be residential that fronts on to this non-street space, but that all of this street fronting space on the ground floor would have to be preserved for non-residential or for economic activity. So they would not be able to develop the ground floor residential in a manner that prevented someone from being able to lease the ground floor space that fronts on to West Jackson.
I'm curious about how, how that, how that's accomplished. Even from a building code standpoint.
Is the, is the public hearing still open, Preston?
It is.
It is.
Okay. Do you mind if, this is Greg Cox, if I chime back in real quick?
Go ahead, Greg. We'd love to hear from you.
So just a couple of points, just, and I'm pretty, I'm really familiar with this Jackson project, so it's, it, since there's a visual up, it's a good example, but when, when Preston kind of talks about retail on the front, that there are minimum square footage requirements, and there's also requirements such as restrooms and you know, handicap accessibility and turn radiuses. And so it, it's, that, that alone, I think, kind of prevents somebody from going five feet in a storefront and building a firewall and kind of making a space look like a storefront but be useless, because it, it does have to be a permitted space and so those requirements do handle it. There's also requirements, I think, for the size of residential units as well. So you can't build residential unit that's, that's too small. So I think it's 350 square feet or under, and it may even be 400 square feet or under. You can't have residential. So I, I do think the code protects on both of those. Something that is important to remember on all these historic buildings is in my opinion, that the historic, preserving the historic nature of the frontage is probably the most important thing above anything else, along with economic activity on your kind of main points. This Jackson, if you kind of look at it, the larger brick building closest to the parking lot, its windows are a little bit, historically, they weren't storefront windows. This was a warehouse. And this was a historic tax credit project. And so that dictates a lot from how you develop these old buildings if you're getting into the tax credit. So they had to maintain kind of an old garage door there and the old window openings. And the way they kind of got around it is they made, it's non-residential space there. They can't really use that particular space as retail, just the way it lays out in the historic nature of the building. But they got creative and used that for kind of mechanical for different retail spaces. So they, they, they used it for non-residential space. And the reason I'm just bringing that up is the code is just saying we're just kind of handling residential right now, not necessarily all the uses. But I think the way Preston's laid this out really protects what the current code is and just makes kind of an, an exception for the instances where something doesn't front a public street. And the, the other thing with this, a lot of this is to make our spaces smaller and more rentable. And I'll go back to what Philip Cox said in our little meeting, you know, the, the market does, you know, put our capitalist hat, the market kind of dictates how to develop. And for the most part, commercial spaces is a little, you, you, you put a lot of the burden of the cost on the, the user or the tenant. But, so I mean, obviously, we would prefer to have more residential or more commercial and larger commercial spaces. But at the end of the day, the way the world's going, smaller commercial spaces are just easier to rent, and it creates that more downtown vibe. I think we all want the unique kind of 600 to 1,500 to 2,000 square feet spaces that, that, you know, sole proprietors can actually manage and maintain and, and and create unique spaces. I know probably some of the most desirable spaces downtown are those 300 or 400 square feet spaces next to Hansam Museum. Just because they're small and, and and the, the cost burden of the lease rates is not as big. So anyways, that's a long-winded way to say, I think the code for sure keeps those retail spaces at a minimum requirement. And at the end of the day, no one wants to waste their storefrontage, because that's the most valuable part of your building. And this amendment is really saying, we got to protect the storefronts because that's the important part of our building, but we got to figure out how to use this extra space that is almost unusable. I'll leave it at that.
Thanks.
All right. Are there other questions of Greg or Philip or Shane while they're on the line, that other explanations y'all want from them? Okay, has, Wendy, has anybody else called in wishing to speak on this?
A man.
Okay. Then Greg, Philip, Shane, do any of you all have anything else to add at this point?
Not me.
Not me.
I think we're good. Thank you.
Okay. Then I'm going to officially close the public hearing, and y'all certainly feel free to keep listening to us chat here. But I'm going to officially close the public hearing at this time and open this up for additional discussions or questions or comments among commissioners.
I like the concept. Certainly, it's live work. That's, that's showing up on our doorstep. We, we'd be foolish if we didn't make some provisions for it. And I think it's got the potential to add some character to the downtown, downtown. If we start creating some, some courtyards and, and, and private spaces, I, I, I think that will do nothing but improve downtown. I'm, I'm still a little concerned about making sure we don't lose the, the retail frontage, but I, I, I think I understand that that's, that's like, like Greg says, that's the most precious part of a develop, development anyway. So we're, we're probably don't have much risk there. I think it's a good kind, a good amendment.
I liked it a lot. This reminded me, you know, last summer, we vacationed in Europe and we spent two weeks in Paris, and we actually rented through Rentavilla right in the heart of Paris. I mean, we were across the street from Notre Dame. And it was a unit where there was a door that you entered from the ground floor, and then you walked up the stairs and the residential unit was above, but there were also, you know, residential units in the back of the building too. And just in that environment, being able to stay right in the heart of town and right with all the storefronts below you and getting up every morning and going out and, you know, going to 10 different bakeries to buy your croissants or whatever. And the shopping that was available right below you and everything. To me, this brings us more to that type of an environment. And I think that's very beneficial to our downtown development. So I, I support it.
I was on the, I was on the subcommittee at, at the meeting, and I just think it's a creative way to continue to energize our, our downtown, and I appreciate these guys coming forward with it.
Anybody else have any additional comments or concerns, questions? If not, then we are looking for either a motion to approve the, this amendment, or we could go ahead and choose to table it if anybody wants to take some more time to discuss it, but I'm pretty much hearing that our questions have been answered, and I think most of the discussion has occurred.
I've moved to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Calhoun and a second by whoever Nicole chooses to record. And that is a motion to approve the text amendment to the ordinance to amend Article Two and Article Six, Section 6.15 of the B2 Central Business District. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
You get me back to the front two pages.
Did we leave something out? Thought I heard comments, so. No? Okay, then, Nicole, would you please call the roll?
Vice Chairman Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Dagenhart?
Yes.
Commissioner Pavlich?
Damien.
Commissioner Pavlich?
You're muted. Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Whitfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Calhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
And Chairman Wild?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay.
Preston, I, I got a question, just a quick question. This goes now to the city commission for three readings. I think that's accurate. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, if, if the city commission changes this in any way, like another amendment on the amendment or whatever, does it have to come back to the planning commission? Or is this one of those things that once it gets to the, to the city commission, it follows through in the three weeks and three, three readings?
I want to verify with Sonny because I'm borrowing from my past, but typically, it's dependent on the level of change or the significance of the change. If the change at the commission level changed the overall intent, meaning, you know, that the policy shifted from what the planning commission is recommending tonight, then it would need to come back. If it was a minor insignificant clarification of terms or you know, some other way that the text itself has been drafted from kind of a ministerial perspective, then that could move forward. But let's use the example of the conversation earlier. If for some reason there is a decision to add a threshold, a minimum square footage threshold for non-residential at the commission level, that would need to come back to the planning commission. That would be a change in intent. That'd be a change in policy. So it, it depends on the level of change.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that explanation. Thanks for that question, Larry. That was a good one. Okay, we're going to move on to other than, and the first item is Item 7.1, and it's the assignment of planning commissioners to standing committees. We have three standing committees as part of our planning commission, the legislative committee, the long-range planning committee, and the current land use committee. And commissioners are asked to serve on one of those three standing committees, which meet intermittently. I'm going to ask Hassan if he wouldn't mind just giving a very brief explanation of the three committees to the commissioners, and then I'll probably And then I'll probably ask for volunteers. Otherwise, we can see where the chips fall as to who ends up on what.
Thank you very much, Chairwoman. The Legislative and Policy Committee essentially deals with issues of laws. If we're changing regulations, let's say the subdivision regulations, the zoning ordinance, if we are making changes. Usually, if they have to do with what kind of stuff Preston was talking about, clerical things, clarifying the language, making it more understandable if there's confusion there, then the Legislative Committee looks into that. Generally, they are looking at the language. Issues of policy, take for example, the guidelines, neighborhood meeting guidelines, things like that. They will look, the Legislative Committee will be in charge of those kind of guidelines. Changes to the Planning Commission regulations, that Legislative Committee will be in charge of looking at that procedures, even the way maybe Planning Commission runs this meeting in terms of procedures, if any changes need to be made in that. That is the work of the Legislative and the Policy Committee. Then the Long Range Committee, right now, they are very busy with a bridge plan. That is what they deal with. They look at the city long term. What do we need in the city long term? What do we need to be planning for? Updating the comprehensive plan, the different elements in that plan. That is the work of the Long Range Committee. If we're having discussion on the Planning Commission for which reference is being made today, maybe the land use, the future land use map, that committee works on that. If we have to update the plan, if we have to make changes to the plan, that committee works on things like that. There are also area plans, you know, maybe a neighborhood plan. That committee focuses on things of that nature. And then you have the Land Use and Transportation Committee. That committee works a lot on issues of transportation. And often that will take them into the subdivision regulations. For example, when we're dealing with the private drives stuff, that's a transportation issue. That committee will do a lot of work on that. If we are changing regulations, that center on things like housing, you know, we're trying to handle a housing issue. That committee will deal with things like that. I think we currently have some discussion on blacks in the community. That committee will deal with things like that. So they deal with more of current land use and transportation issues. When you're dealing with long range land use, long range transportation, long range economic development, then that goes to the Long Range Committee. So basically, those are the three standing committees of the Planning Commission. And it runs, the members are there for one year. So usually, you would have assigned these, members would have chosen where they want to belong. At last month's meeting, where you had the election of officers, but we were kind of waiting for possible appointment of the representative from the planning region. That hasn't happened yet, and we are not so sure it will happen in a short time. The City Commission is still looking for a candidate. So we need to go ahead and get this going. Usually, we tend members on the Planning Commission who have three members on each committee. And then the chair is kind of the roving ambassador in all of them. With us not having all the 10 members present now, it's important that the chair be in one. And then eventually, when the City Commission appoints that one member, then the chair can go back to roving across all the three committees.
Sorry, I'm replying to that. Just kidding. I do want to comment that for new commissioners' information, all of these subcommittee meetings are open to anybody. And staff will send out the invitation to all of the commissioners. And frequently, we will have one member of a committee who cannot attend. So I think in the last year that I have served, I have probably attended each of these different committee meetings at some point in time. So they are always open to everyone. Also, Hassan, I think you commented the Long Range Committee was working on the bridge plan right now. And I think that is very natural kind of adaptation. But there is a separate bridge plan committee. And so I would not want to, while it makes sense that people who are on the bridge plan may be the natural fit for the long range, I wouldn't want to limit it just to those people if others had interest.
Yes, I think the Long Range Committee is kind of highlights and ad hoc committee, is a special committee set up for a special project. The Long Range Committee has the responsibility. So if you say, what's this particular project, we're looking for people to do it. There is an expectation that those who are in that committee will step up first, put it that way, and then all the others can come in. So if when staff is sending out emails inviting planning commissioners to any particular committee meeting, there is an expectation that those who are in that committee have committed to that. All the others are just, you know, they can come in kind of at will. But we have that expectation that those three will be there to drive the project.
Hassan, which committees have vacancies on them currently?
I'm sorry, sir, I didn't hear you clearly.
Are there vacancies on any committees or are we just reassigning all the committees currently?
Everything's up.
Yes, everything is up for reappointing, for redistributing, reappointment, rechoosing where you want to go. Because now we have different commissioners on the board. And I think the Commissioner Calhoun had indicated that he would not be there from maybe November 4 or so. So this is open to commissioners choosing afresh.
I'll be happy to move on to the Long Range Planning Committee.
And I'll be happy, I'll be more than happy to do the legislative or anyone really that you need me to. Okay, wait, Benjamin, start over. You want to do long range? Is that what I heard from you?
That's correct.
All right, let's just do this one at a time. Bob, do you have a preference?
I don't. You put me wherever you need me.
Okay, Chris?
I would prefer to stay on the Long Range Planning Committee where I am today.
Okay, all right. Tempra, did you have a specific preference or anywhere?
It really doesn't matter. I mean, I'll do legislative or I can do the land use since we've already got two on the other.
Okay.
Doesn't matter.
All right, and Jamie?
I'd like to stay on long range, please.
Okay, that would put Ben, Chris, and Jamie on long range. I know that Clay was also working on the bridge plan. Is that going to be any type of problem, Hassan?
No, no, ma'am. He can continue working on the bridge plan, but he needs to be in some other standing committee.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, I think that probably one of the best ways to handle this tonight is to receive, at least those of us who are here in the meeting, receive preferences, number one. And obviously, you have just done that. And then from there, you and Hassan go back and put together recommended assignments. And then, and then those could be distributed and then finalized at the next meeting. I think that probably ought to not try to put the final list together tonight, but go ahead and just get recommendations or preferences. The other is preserving existing committee work. So what, and just because I've run into this in the past, I think the only existing committee, and maybe Nicole could tell me if I'm incorrect or Hassan, the only existing committee that is working right now is the Bridge Plan Committee. But let's say that we had a legislative committee that was out there working on, well, like for example, what we just did, the B2 Residential. If that committee had put all that work, you know, into that conversation and they find themselves in a transition point, then what I've typically done in the past is allow whoever was on that committee to stay on that committee to finish that job. And then, but still, the assignments get done for the new year. Does that make sense? So we don't, we don't have that situation going on tonight. But other than the bridge plan, so I would just move forward with asking for preferences. Maybe we even ask for preferences by email for those members who are not here tonight. And then you and Hassan work together to put together the assignments for the next meeting.
Okay, that's fine. I'll send out an email to the other commissioners and probably to everybody and maybe ask what your choices, and then we'll put that together. So thanks for the suggestion on how to handle that, Preston.
And I'm glad you mentioned what you mentioned too about opportunities for serving on other committees, that you're not stuck on a committee. Commissioner Aldridge made a good point that she has a preference for legislative, but, you know, she's a new member. She might like to see what the work of the other committees are. And so there will be opportunities. There are folks who can't show up at meetings. The other is keep in mind, and this is really for the new members, these committees, although they are ad hoc, as Hassan mentioned, they do follow a fixed meeting schedule. And that's important because early on, we were trying to assign committee meetings kind of willy-nilly, and it was impossible, you know, it's just like herding cats, it's that whole thing. And so we decided that it's important to have fixed committee meeting days. And we have two fixed committee meeting days per month. Nicole, maybe can you confirm for me? One is the first Wednesday, I believe, at 5:00 PM. And the other one is the 3:30 or 4 o'clock before Planning Commission.
Yeah, that's correct. You pick which one. You can do both meetings. Or, but we do have the first Wednesday permanently reserved and also the Tuesday prior to this meeting every month.
Good, thank you very much. And so it's those times, and then committees just fill in those spots when they're needed.
Nicole, what time was that before the Planning Commission meeting? What time does that start?
It usually starts at between 4:30 and 5:00, depending on the items you need to discuss. But we try to wait until 5:00 because most people are working. So it just works better to wait until 5:00.
Yeah, so I was misspeaking, thinking that they were earlier. But if it's a contentious item or if it's an item that we know there's going to need to be some time, then we'll reach out well in advance and see if you can come a little bit earlier. But yeah, I think we, and then the Wednesday meeting is always 5:00, correct? Yeah. Thank you, Nicole.
All right, so I'll send out an email reminder to everyone and then I'll work with staff to go ahead and make assignments to those. But again, everybody is always welcome to attend any. I encourage you to do so. All right, the next item, under other is Item 7.2, and that is an update from the Bridge Plan Committee. I'm going to ask Commissioner Degenhart, since he's the chair of that committee, if he would provide us an update, please.
Yeah, I've talked to Matt briefly this afternoon just to give a quick update. We have certainly gotten deep into a revisit of the Comprehensive Plan 2020, focusing first on the land use element. So we've worked our way through the elements of residential and commercial for land use. And we've had a markup of all the activities that we think are either have yet to be implemented, have been implemented, if they still remain relevant, or they're no longer relevant. So we've at least passed through the land use element completely. And after our last meeting, we came to the conclusion that we wanted to at least give a review to all the elements and invite participation and solicit input from any other commissions or committees or any other bodies inside the city where it's a natural matchup with the topic of a particular element to sort of broaden the foundation of the community that we're assessing to review of these elements and all the activities and all the projects and all the plans and all the strategies behind that. And along with this review, where we're going to be focusing fairly at a fairly low level and not getting into the high-level strategy statements, we're also going to be capturing emerging topics. And all this moving for a couple of years until we get all the input from the census data that will be coming in probably anywhere from 18 months from now to two years from now, where we can actually implement a full-scale revision of a fully full bore strategy plan. Yet to be figured out exactly how we're going to engage the public in terms of public comment, public input. But that's going to have to be developed in terms of an action plan to make sure this is visible to the public with a lot of notice and a lot of comprehensive information provided to the public if they want to get involved with this and then collect their input. And then we're also going to have to work with the City Commission to make sure that we're following their intentions with any kind of strategy plans that they've got in place or that they envision having in place to make sure that all these things are synchronized. So I think we can assume that there's going to be more frequent meetings to push through this activity more completely. Any questions?
I think that's a great synopsis and update of where we've gotten so far with that committee. Thank you, Chris.
This is a bridge plan until we do have the final, the information we need from the census that's going on presently.
It's a revisit, which we're calling a bridge revisit plan to see where we have gaps and see where we think there are more changes that need to be made, when those can be made with the input from the census that will be coming in probably in 2021 or 2022. So yes, that's correct.
So as you identify things, will they just come out of your committee and we'll start working on them? Or is there some deadline for y'all to be complete?
I don't think I can answer that question if there's a firm deadline. The plan that we're operating under right now is titled 2020. And the inference is that it runs through 2020. But I don't think there's a clear requirement that we have to have something completely in place by the end of this calendar year. Preston, can you speak to that?
Yes, sir, I'll be happy to. The Comprehensive Plan does not have a fixed expiration date. Number one, comprehensive plans in the state of Tennessee are not like, for example, in the state of California or state of Florida where they are mandated under state law. In those states, you have to have a comprehensive, you're required under state law to have a comp plan. Has to be updated X number, every X number of years, cannot ever expire. We are not one of those states. You can have a comprehensive plan, and then if you have a comprehensive plan, there are state laws that apply to comprehensive plans, but that is if you have one. Now, don't confuse a comprehensive plan with the urban growth boundary or the urban growth plan. The urban growth plan was what was set up by the state back in, I believe, the 90s that was mandatory for the purpose of annexation. So the urban growth plan is different than the comprehensive plan. So our urban growth plan was adopted originally by Washington County and then Johnson City adopted it as well, basically recognizing, both governments recognizing that, okay, we're good with these areas that, or we recognize that these areas might be annexed by the city of Johnson City and this area outside of that will remain Washington County. And that also applies to Carter and Solomon. The Comprehensive Plan is our long-range vision and our long-range goals and objectives for everything from economic development to land use to transportation, housing, schools, public works, et cetera, et cetera. That does not have an expiration date. And in fact, it was adopted not as one single document. It was adopted, it has been re-adopted many times over the years. But each time it has been re-adopted, the elements are adopted at different times. So the land use element and the economic development element might have been brought forward at one time. But the transportation element gets updated at a different time, just like the schools element gets updated. just like the schools element gets updated at a at a different time. It is ideal to have all of the elements, uh, uh, originally adopted and then updated simultaneously. That just unfortunately isn't always reality. Um, so if you were to look at all of our elements on a list, they have different dates in which they were last adopted or last updated. Um, so, um, but the name of the plan is the Comp Plan 2020. It doesn't mean Comp Plan 2020 that it expires on this date. It was, that was the name given to it. That was also a very popular name given to plans back in the early 2000s when they were being either newly written or updated, uh, that that was the vision for the community, um, looking to 2020. What a lot of places are doing now is they're doing 2040 or 2050. Um, uh, we've even had the conversation, uh, that that we should stop using years and instead focus on what are the important critical visions of our community? Um, and then, uh, focus also on on neighborhood scale plans and and small area plans. But that's another conversation for another day. Um, but back to the original question, it does not technically expire. However, because we are about to get to the end of 2020, um, and we want to be able to carry forward important, uh, policies and objectives that we as the Planning Commission find important and still relevant, still applicable. We want to carry those forward beyond 2020 for a five-year period to allow the census data to to come forward, um, but then also allow us to, uh, within that five-year period, begin a coordinated and major update to multiple elements of the comp plan. We need this document to bridge us, to to carry us through this next five-year period and, uh, recognize those those policies and objectives that are still important and still relevant. Um, and then also use this as an opportunity to identify projects that have been completed. Um, so our comp plan not only identifies policy, meaning the intangibles, the things that we seek to have in our community or the things that that we seek to achieve in our community, um, when it comes to downtown residential or for downtown preservation, uh, or commercial development or or economic development or or housing goals, um, those are the intangibles but have long reaching implication, long range, long range policies. The other are specific projects that are called out. Many of those are in the transportation element, um, or even in the schools element. We need a elementary school, we need a new middle school, we need a road widened, we need, uh, a new road in this particular area. So some of those are project specific and are and are fiscally bound. And so part of this project too is, um, is going back and looking back through these elements and seeing where we have completed those projects and where we have met those objectives. So this is not just a review of of policy, but also recognizing, hey, here are the things that we've accomplished.
Thank you.
I'd add too that when Matt initially, um, met with us with the Bridge Committee, I think his intention was to try to get this review kind of wrapped up rather rapidly. And my understanding is that we've decided to, you know, take a look at everything and see what do we really need to address right now because it has become outdated or something? Um, and what, you know, minor changes can we make on other things till we really get that census data?
And I would add, one of the other important activities that I think we're finding more interesting and more compelling is the emerging topics list.
Yeah.
What types of questions might we think, might we identify that need to be further studied to see how they play into a long long range plan?
So I'm glad to hear both of you mention that because that's a that's a critical piece to this, and that is the 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 bridge plan, this this five-year document, um, is intended to, as I said, review and then also, uh, carry forward. Um, it is not intended to introduce, uh, or or propose, um, uh, uh, new policy that does not have the opportunity to get well vetted through a robust public engagement piece. And number one, that is traditionally ha held or or happens during your your major update to the Comprehensive Plan. That very robust, uh, lengthy public engagement piece, um, will happen during the larger update. And that's the time when you decide as a community, as a board, um, as the city, what are, uh, what are the policies, what are the goals, what what are the objectives tied to some of these emerging topics? Now, the exercise is to identify what are some of these emerging topics and then plan for the study of those topics, uh, but to not engage in, uh, in robust public engagement because number one, we're time limited in that it doesn't technically expire at the end of 2020, but we would like to have this this five-year plan, uh, done by the end of this year or early next year, um, ideally by the end of of 2020. And then the other is that the pandemic has created a a real problem with our ability to come together in large groups and, um, and 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 really chew on a lot of this stuff. Um, and then third, i- is has been part of the conversation all along, and that is the, uh, receiving all new data from the U.S. Census Bureau on our community. Um, and so, uh, one thing that I'm proud of the committee doing is that as they've gotten into this conversation with Mr. Manley and the committee, is that the committee has said, we hear you, we know that this is a review, we know that we're not going to, uh, deep dive into some new policy and and emerging, uh, topics. We we recognize that, but we still want to have a a as robust public engagement process as we can have during the middle of a pandemic. And so so I think that's great. I think that, um, that's the Planning Commission doing what the Planning Commission should be doing. And so that's a that's a challenge for us on staff, but we accept that challenge and we will move forward and do the best we can to find ways to engage the public, uh, virtually uh, or or safely, um, between now and the end of the year and, uh, have these conversations about what has been successful in the elements to date, what has not been successful, um, and, uh, will you be a part of the conversation in identifying emerging topics, recognizing that we'll get deeper into that conversation at a later time?
Other questions for the Bridge, um, Plan Committee or?
I would ask Commissioner Degenhart, did I misspeak in in that last statement about your last conversation with Mr. Manley?
No, I think you were right on right on target. Uh, emerging topics are are expansive and in in potential, and you can't think that we're going to, we're not going to address those between now and the end of the year or it's it's not the plan to address those in the bridge plan. The the plan is to register those, recognize where that some of them might need further study, and they might become a bigger part of a future strategy plan.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, other questions or discussions on that topic? Then according to Mark Clark, we've gone way too long here.
Madam Chair. Can I ask one thing?
I guess.
Okay, I'll make it quick. It's just, it's it's part of the Bridge Plan conversation and it's just simply in an introduction to Commissioner Calhoun on a conversation that 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 we at the staff level, obviously one I need to have with the city manager and, um, uh, but with Commissioner Calhoun, uh, stating that that we are sadly gonna gonna lose his 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 valuable input um, in this process as well as, uh, other Planning Commission items. Um, we'd like to be able to to grab a hold of somebody in the City Commission who could, uh, kind of, and 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 work with us at on the bridge plan and, uh, be a part of those conversations as we move forward. And so that's something that that I'll be reaching out and having conversations with with my boss, and then hopefully we can have some conversation with the City Commission about, um, uh, linking up with another city commissioner to be a part of this process so that when ultimately this comes to the City Commission, um, that that someone's been a part of those conversations.
John Hunter served on the Planning Commission before.
Yeah, I think, um, John, Joe, uh, I think Jenny served, didn't Jenny serve on the Planning Commission at one point in time?
Jenny and John both, yes.
Yeah, looks like Todd Fowler's a target.
Bullseye.
He'll he'll never play golf with me again for that.
You're correct.
I'll I will I will mention that, Preston, at the next City Commission meeting, that that's that's an important aspect of having somebody there that's going to be, uh, real real active and it's a real important time too. You won't have my replacement on the City Commission until obviously November.
Right. Thank you.
Chairman Wild, this is Alan Cantor. I hate to make this go longer. Um, earlier tonight, we were talking about plats and right of ways. I have a about a 30-second explanation. When, uh, someone dedicates a right of way to the city, we're not really taking ownership of that right of way, they're giving the public an easement to maintain something there, like a roadway, a water line, sewer line, a storm drain. But, um, title does not pass to the city. Uh, the title stays in the hands of the developer. Um, obviously, that that that's, they don't pay taxes on that anymore. And the, uh, right of way is simply an easement. It's not property in like the property the City Hall sits on, we own that by title, we have a deed for that. Roadways, we do not have deeds for them, just plats that dedicate it. So, uh, when we say they're giving it to the city, they're not giving the land to the city outright, it's just the right to use it. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, I appreciate that clarification. All right. Are there any other items that need to be presented, discussed, hashed out this evening?
Not that I know of. Um, if I recall at the beginning, just before the meeting began, you were, Preston was experiencing something on the different boundaries in the city, uh, that Planning Commission, I think there was a question about who creates the planning region boundary, just knowledge, information, uh, element. The planning region boundary is created by the Department of Economic and Community Development at a state level. When the Planning Commission is raised to the level of a regional planning commission, it is the Department of Economic and Community Development that does that. And in doing that, they establish that boundary. Of course, when the Planning Commission requests to become a regional planning commission, it proposes that boundary to them, and then they review it and in making that approval, they likewise approve the boundary.
Well, thank you for that explanation, Hassan.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Okay.
I think, uh, except, uh, there was an element of the retreat that you had talked about at last Planning Commission meeting. And, uh, staff, we're doing a lot of work on that. I know today Nicole reached out, we're trying to get venue. Really, the issue has been getting a venue that will be convenient, will meet, uh, social distancing requirements, you know, take care of the concerns that Planning Commission has had, that some have brought us into having virtual meetings instead of meeting your city hall. And, um, Nicole has been doing a lot of work in that regard. Today, she got in touch with with Charlie on the possibility of using, uh, the MPC building, whether we have enough space there that we can use, and we've got some green light on that. So she will be working from now going forward on the logistics and seeing how that that can work out. So expect emails from her, some updates on when we can possibly have that retreat.
Okay, if there is not, if we do not have a standing committee meeting, um, then perhaps the first Wednesday of next month at 5:00 PM would be a desirable time for that because it would already be on everybody's calendar. Certainly, if there is a committee meeting that needs to take place, that should take precedence, but that just might be a suggestion of a good time for it.
That's a good suggestion. We would look at the availability of the hall at that time and then send out an email on that.
Okay. All right, are there any other questions, comments, updates, motions to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Okay, I think we've got both Commissioner Pavlich and Aldridge motioning to adjourn, so I'm going to take that as a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Preston, are you opposing it or are you waving bye? All right. Hey, guys, I really love you all, but I'm tired.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone, and I took an email from me for committees. All right, good night.